All right, so this is the November 25th, 2019 meeting of the Montpelier Planning Commission. Called to order. And the first thing we have to do is approve the agenda, so if everyone takes a look. Any changes to the agenda? Okay. Agenda's approved.
Deemed approved.
Deemed approved. Next on the agenda is the comments from the chair. The only thing I really have to say is just a reminder of kind of where we're at in like, planning over the next, planning on planning the next couple of months. We're going to be working on this, the different chapters of the city plan, and tonight we'll find out about how long it takes us to get through one. We have two to look at, and that's really all we plan to do. Last time, the group more or less decided to wait on doing a vision statement until we've done a few chapters and until we, you know, kind of get our feet under us on this, and then start thinking about a vision statement and the process for that. Also, in January, we'll be revisiting the design review stuff we've been working on, because that, both the formal hearing will take place then. Mike, do you know exactly when at this point?
Don't have an exact date yet.
Okay. So that'll be coming up too. So that's our next couple of months right there. And that's all I have to say, so moving on from there, we have general business and comments from the public, but no members of the public are present, which then brings us to approval of the minutes from November 12th. So everyone can take a look at those.
Just have a quick question about the discussion. On the first thing on the second page, the last sentence, "Change regarding cheaply built structures on the river hazard area will be proposed." Sheds and whatnot? Or is it something else? Am I misremembering it?
Um, yeah, it's, I think the words I used were low-value structures with low-value contents.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to make sure that's what. I want to make sure we're not talking about like...
Yeah.
Shabby. I don't know.
No, it's not shabbily built.
Yeah, I feel like, I mean, I think I changed that. It does seem kind of better.
Low-value instead of cheaply built.
We're not judging.
Yeah, I mean, I was like, I don't remember talking about it.
Yeah, it has to do, I mean, what we have in this specific case is somebody who is, does snow plowing, and so he just wants to put a structure over top of his sand pile so the sand pile doesn't freeze into a rock. And we're just like, if the river moves and eventually takes out that structure, he's out a couple hundred bucks, and so we don't see that as a big threat. It's not in the flood hazard area, it's only in the river corridor, so it's, you know, but it's outside of the river setback. But if the river in this location were to move 60 feet, it would take out his low-value structure with low-value contents.
So it's below the floodplain?
It's above the floodplain, actually.
Really?
Yep.
Oh, so it's out of the floodway, that too?
It's in the river corridor, yeah, it's in the river corridor where we have the meander belt.
Yeah.
And that's what could potentially be impacted. Currently, the rules don't allow any structures, any new structures, in the river corridor.
Which is the floodway?
Nope.
That's another classification.
It's another classification, so the floodway is looking at where the water comes up and where it goes to.
Yes.
In a hundred-year event, your floodway is looking at...
Meander.
Well, no, the floodway is where the majority of the water would tend to move.
Yeah.
It's more complicated than that, but so usually, if you're starting with the river, you'd have the floodway, then you'd have the floodplain fringe.
Yeah.
Floodway fringe. Then there's also a concept which the state has implemented, which is the river corridor. Now, this is looking at the river itself moving left to right. So you may have a large berm, and what happens is, the river moves and undermines it, and then the bank sloughs in, and so something that's out of the floodplain can end up...
In the river.
In the river. And so, they've tried to map out these river corridors. We adopted a river corridor, but only from the Coming Street Bridge to the Wrightville Dam, so just on that stretch there. So, yeah, and not all cases. In some cases, you can be in one and not the other. Usually, the floodplain is inside the river corridor. The river corridor is wider, but not always. So, in this case, we happened to get an application for what seemed like a reasonable project, and the rules would prohibit it, so we figured we would amend the rules to allow this case and other cases like it in the future.
So I think we have a motion. We're looking for a motion, maybe?
To approve the minutes as amended?
Yeah, unless you, yeah, you understand?
Oh, the change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just had one more question. Is it important? Because I noticed they said Ariane's boat couldn't be seen in the video.
I was just going to ask that too, yeah.
And I don't care, I mean, I think they all passed three to one. There was one, on the first page, the second from the bottom. Aaron made a motion that 10-4 be included, move Redstone to 7-5 and portion of three properties on the west side. So, I voted against, I think, some of those, and maybe voted for one. I don't know if that's important. I'm fine with the guys, because I assume they passed in all cases anyway, if we need, so do we need to change that or not? I don't know. And I don't remember which district or which, so I'm not sure.
I don't think...
If we don't need it, I just...
Couldn't be seen in the video?
I'm trying to remember if we did separate motions on the changes.
We did. I think we did do.
I think we did on either side of the map, right? Like this side, and then the very south side?
We did separate votes for each individual change. I don't remember, yeah, I know there were a couple, maybe, that you voted against. I don't think, I don't think it hurts anything to be stated like this, because...
Okay, that's good.
Because, you know, we think that you voted against that, and it still passed, like you said.
Yeah.
Your vote only matters if it's on the...
What?
Your vote only matters if it's on the camera.
If we can see you.
Well, I move approval of...
Worst-case scenario, someone proves that you voted against that. Okay.
Watch the video.
You can't see me!
I move approval of the minutes from November 12th.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay. As amended, is that correct?
Oh, yes, as amended.
All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abandoned.
Okay. Minutes approved as amended. Now, we can get to business, which is first, taking a look at the Historic and Cultural Resources Chapter of the City Plan, which Mike is going to walk us through. Take a look.
Okay. So, just a little bit of a big picture. You have two here, you've got Historic and Housing. We've talked in the past about the implementation. That was that chapter, which had the butterflies, rainbows, and unicorns, so we've got one done and two of them that we're looking at right now. I'm currently, or this month, I've met on Economic Development, Energy, Natural Resources, I met with Conservation Commission, Transportation, and I've been working on Utilities and Facilities. So we have a number of them that are out being worked on. But these two are ones that have been, I met with, in this case Historic, I met with the Historic Preservation Commission, gave them a bunch of ideas, they worked on it, they came back, we made some revisions, and they made some final changes. So, they looked at it a couple times, they approved it, and sent it on to you guys to start to review. The idea, over time, is that you'll get to review each of the chapters, you can start being able to compare them, how they relate to each other, are there things missing, are there things that are talked about in two chapters? You know, do they complement or contradict each other? So that's kind of your role at this point, is to go through and start reading and reviewing them. Obviously, the example I always like to use is the public transportation. We can talk about it in energy, we can talk about it as a community service, is public transportation a community service, or is that talked about in the Transportation Chapter? There are different places we can talk about it, but we have to talk about it somewhere. So, this was the first one. Again, we're focusing on the implementation strategy, so they, I gave them a bunch of ideas to think about for aspirations. Again, I presented to them the butterflies, rainbows, and unicorns theory of how we were laying things out, and then they went through and kind of put together... This one is probably the most simple and straightforward, so it's a good one to kind of start with, to get used to the, to the process, because there's only one aspiration, three goals, and then a set of strategies for implementing those goals, which is a fairly straightforward addition. And, I mean, a couple of cases, as I read through it today, getting ready for the meeting tonight, there are a couple of little edits or things that I would do. I've got a question for them that I'm not sure where they came up with that idea, but that's a little bit of an introduction. So I don't know...
Mike, should each one of these be identified as a program, project, or policy? The first goal doesn't seem to sort of identify those.
The goal, the goal would not, so the goal...
No, 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 I mean the strategies.
Yeah, the strategies within the goal. In some cases, it's, like, one of them is plans or studies, so a lot of this first one, because the goal is to improve the city's understanding of its historic and cultural resources, a lot of these are ones that, you know, we should conduct surveys. I mean, I don't think we have to necessarily say, "This is a plan," but that's basically what it is. In this case, it would be the Historic Preservation Commission.
I mean, that might be helpful to know, that that's who it is, that we're not going to dump this on your office. Yeah, so, one more thing for you to do.
Yep. Well, so the idea is, and we talked about this a little bit, is that the, a number of these, where the dark italics, the bold italics, are really meant that we would eventually have that be able to be a hyperlink, to where we would have a more detailed explanation of who would be doing this, and what it would take, but otherwise, the implementation strategy's going to get really big if we start talking about who's going to be responsible for doing what.
But where it says, "Conduct survey of archaeologically sensitive areas."
That's one that the, what would probably happen in that case is, the Historic Preservation Commission would apply for a CLG grant to hire a consultant to do that project?
Yeah, I mean, it, I don't know, it just, I think it would be helpful if we had an idea of whose ballpark is that going to fall into. And I thought that was in fact one of our goals, to be able to identify who's going to be taking on these various strategies.
Yeah, and there, and there will be. The issue is a little bit of chicken and egg, of how much do we build out the other pieces until we've kind of laid out what's going to be supported, where we're going to go? I think, yes, the answer is yes, it will be. It is discussed above, and above the goals and strategies, there's a little bit of a description of, you know, the Historic Preservation Commission, and, you know, the planning and implementation of this Historic and Cultural Resource Plan will be accomplished under the guidance of Historic Preservation Commission, with staff support by the city manager, funded by the city council. So, they, they have their, they're going to be the primary people who are going to be implementing most of these when it says, you know, "Do a culturally sensitive areas" and map resources.
So, okay, are they, so they're actually going to be doing this, not city staff?
Well, I mean, with the assistance of city staff, they don't, there's only so much they can do as a volunteer staff, so we have, currently, they're assigned four hours of assistance. That's Meredith, every month, Meredith goes to their, goes to their meetings and helps them out.
Right, yeah.
I mean, there are a number of other people that factor into this. If there was a grant application for somebody who needed to do a facade renovation and was going through the designated downtown program, Kevin could fill out those grant applications and assist folks with that, so it's not just Meredith, but they would be the ones tasked primarily with working on this. And they, certainly, when I was working with them, they were very, they found this very helpful, because it really, they, they didn't know what they were going to be doing for the next couple of years, so for them, this actually turned out to be a good mental exercise for them for what they wanted to set up and what they wanted to try to do over the next couple of years, now that they had finished updating the historic register and doing the design review rules, they were kind of like, alright, what's our next, what's our next thing we want to be working on? So, it's a little bit of a long wish list.
I have a hard time with this sort of format of breaking it up by, of the way it's been broken up, and then to have like the goal, and then the strategies under that, and then another goal that's like vaguely similar, and then the strategies under that, and having a lot of the strategies be exactly the same, which, you know, again, not a substantive comment, and I could take this and just rearrange it, but I don't know what other people think, my brain is just struggling to take all of this in.
What's the problem? Oh, it's just like too much?
Yeah, we're going to end up with this massive document of a lot of redundant things that's going to sit on a shelf.
I mean, I think this is okay, the starting point, just because it helps us, I mean, actually, like, the redundancy can kind of help us feel like, well, they want to do these things, so, I mean, we'll consolidate all this stuff, I think, and streamline it, but yeah, I think this is, you know, this is a working document, it's not a...
Yeah.
But I take your point, it's a lot.
I mean, are they actually, they're proposing all of these strategies that the commission has?
Yeah, I mean, we put a number of, I made a number of suggestions for them to look at, I think a couple of them could be, could be edited. I mean, there's a lot of things that we already do, I think some of them are ones that we just have to look at of what's new.
I think it'd be helpful for me, so I'm also kind of struggling with how to process it, because I'm visual and this is hard to see. So, it would be helpful, I think, to see it, maybe as a table, something that is a little bit easier to digest, and then I, but it's really, it's ultimately something I think we need to go through and figure out what those overlaps are. And I think it's important to distinct, to have a distinction between things that we're already doing, and things that we're, that are my good ideas we might want to do in the future, and those are really, I think the good ideas for the future are really the meat of it, so then we can say, "Let's, let's keep doing these things," and have that as a separate list, but I think pulling those out is going to be helpful. And then if there are things that require funding, or more staff time, or more than we currently have, I think that needs to be identified as well.
Yeah, and I was going to say, can we estimate? I don't know if that's part of the city plan, to estimate how much money it would cost to, yeah, because I noticed the additional resources as well. Sorry, Gordy.
No, that's fine. So I was just going to ask everyone, like, how they feel about going ahead and diving in and doing some of that now. You can walk through, and we can try to flag things that are redundant and improvements.
Yeah, the redundants I can find pretty easily, because I know they're, they're in there. And we can, as I said, we can work on how this gets restructured and how it eventually gets presented. I mean, because one of the presentation pieces is, we're trying to get this to be more of a web-based, you know, if this were structured with carrots and dropdowns, then you would have the aspiration, and you'd have the three goals, and if you hit on a carrot, it might drop you to what's the strategies under that goal, and then it becomes a little bit clearer. And I guess maybe that's the place to start, is to start at the top of the aspiration, and whether you think that's, makes sense. I would, in this case, I would strike the continue to, and just say, "Montpelier will be a community that understands, appreciates, and preserves its historic and cultural resources." So that's their long-term aspiration that they want to work towards.
Because people could argue, you know, to what extent we're continuing.
Yes.
And that's generally not language you want to have in aspiration.
In aspiration.
Shouldn't it be "is" community?
Where's the...
Uh, I, it was just in the aspiration, I think we used more...
I like continue to take out, yeah.
Yeah, we used "will be a" in a number of them, kind of looking at a future state that we were looking to achieve. "Montpelier will be a community that understands," and then the key is that there, there's certain, the understands, appreciates, and preserves are the three important things, and then the goal A is to improve the city's understanding of historic and cultural resources. Again, are we looking to maintain it? Are we looking to evolve? Are we looking to transform? In this case, we're kind of doing a more evolve, we're looking to improve our understanding, we're looking to increase the city's appreciation for its historic and cultural resources, and to continue and improve the city's protection of historic and cultural resources. So those were the three goals, they've broken it to three different goals, and then came up with strategies. How would we increase our understanding of our resources? Well, we would conduct the historic surveys, we would do more of those. I had a question on the, the next one, to identify and develop historic contexts and themes, I'm not sure exactly what they were talking about there. That's one they must have added in.
That does need clarity.
Yeah, and it's not...
And then so, so on, and so these were all meant to achieve that understanding line of how we would...
So, continue means that it's already happening?
Continue would mean that it's already happening, things we're already doing. Then there would be an amend or a new, so sometimes we have a program that we need to adjust, like, you know, then there's to continue to participate in the CLG program, that's something that we already do.
Is it me, or this seems like, kind of like, an underwhelming aspiration, that we'll like continue to understand our certain cultural resources? Like, we have like the biggest contiguous, like, historic district in the state, we're like the state capital, we have these incredible historic cultural resources, shouldn't they be like celebrated and recognized, like, nationally? I don't know, that seems more like more of a goal, or aspiration, rather than continuing to understand our resources.
Yeah, my, my recommendation was to strike continue to out of that aspiration. I thought that would make it stronger, but it still doesn't celebrate, as you, as you would have for a much stronger...
Appreciate.
Appreciation serves that function.
Basically, first, we have to get a community that understands, you know, that they are special.
Yeah, but I feel like that's more of a strategy, right? Like, our goal isn't, I mean, maybe it's to have like an enlightened population, but is that really what we're, like, if in 20 years from now, we're at a point where like, oh, a lot of the community really understands our historical, I guess that's pretty cool, like, maybe in our schools, we have like, you know, programs like that, but...
We're only looking eight years down the road, so at the end of eight years, we should definitely have that community that does this. Hopefully.
I like a bolder statement, if you, if you have some language to pitch.
Could we say something about its cultural and histor, its historic and cultural resources? So like, it's descriptive noun, historic and cultural resources, so like, not, like, to acknowledge the significance of them in the state, or nationally, as you're trying to, as you were saying?
Are you saying of its significant historic and significance in there?
Yeah, of significant, but that's, no, yeah, that's maybe not good enough, but kind of like, if we're trying to articulate that, Montpelier is particularly special in some way, that would be one way we could put it in this sentence.
Can we, yeah, can, can we talk about like our, our history of building, like, what are, resources is just so generic and, what does that mean? You know, like, they bring this to like a little bit, so that like a normal person on the street, like, you explain this to them, you know what you're talking about, you're not like, why don't you understand our cultural resources? And it's like, what does that mean?
And another, another thing I can put out there, I mean, these are our first ones that we're working on, I had to kind of make a decision as to how to phrase things, and we would be consistent throughout. In this case, I was kind of, I may get this wrong, using a second person instead of... So we're talking about appreciating and preserving its historic and cultural resources. It could also go and say, "Montpelier will be a community that understands, appreciates our historic and cultural resources." I mean, at least, that makes more of a, it's just how we, how we phrase it will be consistent throughout, I just, as I said, I did it if you want how we're...
Yeah, I do too, yeah.
We've also heard, we've also heard celebrate as a, as a thing to add, and we've also heard reference to the state and national role of Montpelier.
Yeah, like, state and nationally significant historic and cultural resources, like, that would just name them as something that is undisputably important, and that's what we're trying to recognize and understand and appreciate and preserve.
Right, and if we could be like, recognized as a community that is, like, does an excellent job at doing that, I feel like that's something where we can be like, hey, we were recognized, like, that happened, you can say yes or no. I don't know when we'll get to a point where we can check a box to say that the community understands our cultural resources, like, did we accomplish that? That's going to be tough to...
We should include an assessment goal, everyone has to be tested.
I think a little bit of the understand was to get to, to answer some of the question of why we do some things. Why do we can, why do we study and continue to, you know, why would we do an archaeologically sensitive study? Well, it's really, the community may not, the community broadly may not understand, but the community, at least in the Historic Preservation Commission, that, that smaller group of people who are very interested in this, would increase an understanding of our resources that we have.
Can I make a suggestion here, which is, I take your point, and I think it's a very good one, but I might suggest is, I think, once we get a better handle on some of the other chapters, and we're able to look at this piece in conjunction with a larger set of chapters that we're looking at, we will have a better sense of how, and then we develop a visioning statement, that will help guide how we frame sort of the nuts and bolts issues that are outlined in the chapter here. I mean, it sounds like what you're talking about, like, what we're already getting the weeds on is how we want to frame these things, and so how the language we want to use to couch the nuts and bolts issues that are outlined here, and I feel like we might be getting ahead of ourselves if we do that, because, I mean, this isn't the city plan, this is one small component of it, and I think once we look at some more, we'll have a better sense of like, do we want to use celebrating Montpelier as sort of a unifying theme in our visioning statement, and then we can apply that theme to these chapters, and we can tweak the language to sort of fit that. But looking at other sections, it might just seem like, maybe that's not the right word we want to use. I, I'm just saying, like, I feel like we might be kind of getting ahead of ourselves with how, like, specific, we're kind of, we're kind of getting the weeds too quick on this, where...
Yeah, I think word smithing things is probably...
Right, exactly, I think we might want to just look at this for what this really is, it's an outline of sort of the, the strategies that they proposed to the commission to try to achieve certain goals, and my suggestion is, is we take the goals as they are on their face value right now, don't question them, and sort of look at whether or not the strategies that are outlined here, how we want to, A, what's being done, B, what that we can do, and whether or not we can prioritize those things into the city plan, and then take a look, and then once we have that figured out, then we can sort of take a look at the goals. Like, I think there's certain value in the understanding goal, it's not sexy by any means, but I do think that there's value, and I think if we sort of think about it just as like, do these strategies make sense to support that goal? And if those strategies make sense, I think the value of the goals sort of becomes a little more apparent, as opposed to just saying like, I don't, understanding, which I agree, particularly. is a particularly engaging term. That's just my two cents.
I, I feel like, and I, maybe I'm thinking about, where I'm sure we're all thinking about the process in a little bit different way, but like, to me, I'm looking at this and I want to get it to a place where the language is a little more concrete, or people could look at this and understand what's really being said, so that we can have a robust, or as robust as possible, whoever wants to get into this, you know, chapter, participation and feedback. Because I, I just think, yeah, some of the language is kind of like, well, what are we really talking about? And I, I don't know. That's, anyway, just my two cents.
There will be, um, a chapter, a discussion chapter that will be before this. We've kind of done things backwards, talking about the implementation strategy first, and then working back to the chapter. So there will be a more, I guess I would say, flowery or better, you know, we want a thousand words that really explains why historic and cultural resources are important. And, you know, maybe that's where we get more of a description, but, you know, it is important that, you know, I don't disagree with John, that it is kind of a, a bit of a dry.
Right, no, but I think.
A dry aspiration, but I'm, I'm hoping that there's a, a written part that's really meant to inspire. We're not getting bogged down in, in graphics and all these other things, or, or, you know,
Yeah, it's, but there's a place for us to synthesize and like, really pack a punch.
Really go and send out the message of why, why this is special, why this is important, why we talk about this, and give people a reason, you know, this is why we, you know, spend money and spend time doing this. This is why we have an HPC. This is why they're a certified local government, and, um, you know, why we have design review rules.
Well, I think that there was some substance to the word smithing. I think, I think we were doing both there. And I think this is the, the time for it.
And the appreciates, just before I lose my train on, on the appreciates piece, this really comes back to the reason why Cliff Street got removed from design review. And the sense was just that they, they don't understand the value of protecting the historic resources, and that was why, from the Historic Preservation Commission, they felt it was important to, to have as one of our things, that, that the community understands and appreciates why historic preservation is important. And so for them, even though they're, they're a little bit more dry, there are consequences, I guess, to having a community that doesn't. And there's a sense that we have great resources, and our community doesn't fully understand and appreciate them.
Well, but possibly, I mean, some financial considerations for the homeowners, I'm assuming, was also a factor. Maybe they do appreciate cultural resources, but they also appreciate their budget, and they value one over the other. So I just, I mean.
Actually, they, they identified it, that they didn't understand why they were in the historic district. That was what they said. So.
But is that why they wanted to get out?
Yes, yes. They thought that they.
They didn't, they didn't think their resources were the best to appreciate, like.
Right, and they didn't see the value of appreciating them, really.
I, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to second guess what they do or don't appreciate or understand. What I do think is that they're, they did highlight some process issues that the city had in treating people inconsistently.
Yes, that was a factor as well.
And a lack of clarity in the regulations, um, and did not want to be, you know, subject to that, which I don't think is reflected in this at all, just to suggest that they don't understand or appreciate, is sort of putting the blame on them and saying, you 're not enlightened enough to, to live there and, you know, be subject to that, when really, when we look at, you know, our, our city and our government, or what we've set up in regulations, I think we have to take some ownership and responsibility in, in creating a system that can do this, and at the same time, have people not feel like they are being tricked or are, are not getting like, a fair shake or understanding of what they can and can't do.
I, I guess under the goal A, where it says, improve the city's understanding, I can certainly understand, appreciate that all of these strategies might improve the understanding of the HPC, but I'm not sure how that translates into the public. How is this freedom in the public that understands?
The three goal areas are really different buckets. That's, the first one is really the surveying, data collection, information side. The second one is really what they're, what they're calling appreciation. That's really the education for the community piece. So actually, I think the three buckets they broke it down into make a lot of sense. So it's the, we need more fish about these things, what do we need to get? What sort of education do we have for the community? What other opportunities might be there? And then the third one is really that, then how do we protect our resources? So I think those three buckets make a lot of sense, in terms of their goal areas.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm just thinking that, that even within each one of those buckets, there's a public value, there's value to it, I mean, that public participate in that. The public should understand their resources as well as the planning, the historic commission does.
In the strategies, I'm not seeing where this information that's being gathered is being spread to the public.
It was meant to kind of come out more in the, in the section B, under the community appreciating. So develop a speaker series, hosting walking tours, developing self-guided walking tours, improve the historical and cultural resources topic on the city's website, identify education materials for the public.
I think they're identify and develop historic context for themes significant to Montpelier's historic development. I think if I understand what they meant by that, that should go in B. But it was the one you were gonna.
That's the one that I totally didn't understand.
Yeah, if I, if I, I'm, have a thought about what that means, then I think it should go in B.
Probably a B. I'll, I'll ask them and see.
I think they mean like, for example, if a theme, for example, if a theme significant to Montpelier is that, like, when you think of Montpelier, what do you think of? I'm just, I'm trying to think of something, but like, it's, well, it's like, um, yeah, like, it's a state capital, so we should be identifying and developing historic contexts, or like, stories, or communications about Montpelier's history as a capital. Or if we think of it as a walkable city, or with the bike path and stuff, then we should be talking about what was the historical context of walkability in Montpelier? I think that's what they're talking about. So like, things that we already just think are important about Montpelier? What was the history of all that? How did that come to be? I think is what they're trying. So it's like, creating narratives, historical narratives around things we already value. What's the history of the college up on the hill?
Or the fact that we have a historic downtown at all?
Yeah, or like, the, uh, there's the little thing on Taylor's Langdon Street with the floods, maybe a historic ground.
It's a flood.
I was gonna say, isn't there a historical context in downtown, like, fires and floods?
Then there was another fire.
Exactly.
Why are all the houses built after 1880? We have a fire for that.
Or a flood.
Or flood.
Right, so, because, yeah, that's not really the gathering.
That's not an information gathering thing, that's a communication tool.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check in.
But the intent is a communication tool.
I think so, yeah.
I'm not sure we need to, to line them up perfectly with the goals. If you think of it as having, you know, our goals listed right away, and then all the strategies, and then you can have like, a links to goal A, goal, goal B, maybe, like, this or so.
It's a different way of, different way of doing, you could do like, parenthetically, you know, goal A, B, you know, whatever one they attach to.
Right, and maybe it'll end up in another section as well.
Oh, yeah, the expectation is that, like, especially unified development regulations? That's your zoning regulations? I mean, that's gonna plunk into chapter after chapter after chapter. It's just gonna keep dropping in. But yeah, that would be, that could be another way. I think this was, as, as I said, this was how they were, what, how I worked with them was to go through and say, okay, you know, if this is important, if community appreciation is important, what would you do? And then we would go back to go through and say, well, this is, this is something you did, you know, being a CLG means we can do grants for outreach. Well, we already talked about that CLG also gives you money to do grants for understanding. Well, we'll just say, say it again, but obviously, the same program works for both goals. So it was just our way of working through, but again, it works well for working through, developing it, but for presenting it, it may just make sense to have the aspiration, have the three goals, and then have list the strategies with links.
So Mike, are we, is part of our charge to sort of evaluate the viability of some of these proposed, to use your pronouns, I guess, like, is it our job to determine whether or not unicorns, butterflies, and rainbows are worth putting in the town plan?
There certainly could be, um, places where, and, I mean, there's one, for example, that on the last page, you know, amending the tax stabilization program. I don't know if it's, if it makes, makes a lot of sense for them to work that way, because the last sentence isn't actually possible, so we actually have to strike focus on single and two-family and owner occupied, because they're actually not eligible under state law to be in the tax stabilization program. So there's an easy one. I mean, there's no real policy decision for us to make. It's not really possible, so we can strike that. And then the question is, is this really, um, you know, most of our tax stabilizations are going to be in the downtown, or, or, most of our historic structures are in the downtown, which is in the TIP district, and.
Sure, can I, can I take a more, kind of a more straightforward example? Like, let's say, page one, so conduct a survey of archeological, archaeologically sensitive areas and map resources.
Yep.
Okay. That's gonna require certain map resources, right? Your office can identify particular grants that maybe they could apply for to do that sort of work, but, I mean, understanding full well that money from here takes money from there, in most instances. You know, at some point, you know, typically, the city plans just sort of say, these are sort of goals that we strive for, these are implementation strategies, we will try to implement to, to further these goals, without consideration of whether, like, what the practical viability of those implementation strategies being executed.
Yep.
You know what I mean? Like, it's.
Yeah, certainly, you guys should, can, and should look at these. There may be things that come up that just, from a big picture, these are being, these are being developed in a silo, and you guys are certainly going to be able to, to see economic development ones that may come out, or natural resources ones that may come out that are just too far out there. I could think of any number of possibilities that we could look at, you know? The transportation committee comes out hypothetically and says, no more cars in the downtown. And we just go through and say, I know that's their, their aspiration and their goal. In light of what we think is reality, that's just one we're gonna have to adjust and move out of, because we don't think we can have economic development and housing in our downtown if we don't have parking as much as they want to, you know? And maybe it's one we go back and talk to them and go and say, we don't think this is, this is a direction that, from a policy standpoint, and city council's gonna have the same option when it gets to them. These are the wish lists of these silos.
Right, and I guess that's the question.
And you can go through and say, you guys are asking for way too much, there's no way we could, you know, based on this.
Yeah, and I just, and that's sort of what I, the core of the question is, is like, given that these are wish lists, do, you know, do we have, is there some expectation that the commission is gonna say, sure, it's a wish list, but it's limited, you know, we have to think about it in terms of like, reasonable.
Well, what's reasonable in an eight-year window?
What is, what is reasonably plausible, given the, you know, economic constraints of the city, and, and, you know, what is, what do we put forward as a visioning, you know, plan for the town for the next eight years?
This is, this is my understanding. And Mike, correct me if, if, if I'm off base on anything. I mean, it's, this planning commission will be making a suggestion to the, to the city council, so I, my understanding is, we can change what we want. I think that in, along the way, though, that it, we should be, you know, conscientious of the other committees and let them know what we're changing, and they'll have an opportunity to go separately themselves to city council and say, we really want to get rid of cars, and the city and planning commission took that out. So I think that that would be like, how we should try to work with this along the way. But what I'm getting is, I don't think we should be afraid to make changes, and, and to make it our own. I, I, I think one question I do have right now, because we're all, this, the whole point of this meeting tonight, which is, this is a really great discussion, is to figure out what process works for us in going through this. And I think one question that we should try to resolve right now is, do we, do we want to more or less approach this as a, we want to send some feedback right now to the drafters of these chapters? And think of it that way, and send some sort of, give, give Mike some more, like, amorphous, maybe not completely ironed out things, which we've, I've heard some of those suggestions tonight? Or on the other hand, do we want to go ahead and just take some ownership and make some, and do some rewrites, basically? Which I've heard some people suggest things like that. I've also heard some people tonight not want to go down that road of rewriting like that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I just want to throw that back out to everyone else, including Mike, and say, like, you know, what approach between those two, or something in between, do we want to try to take with these chapters?
I think part of it is us figuring out exactly what we want from each group. So for that, your example, archaeological sensitive areas, I want to know, well, is that something that's in their work plan for the next eight years? Is that something that they, that's what they want to use their limited staff time for? Or is it, or do they have work plan ideas? And then, if not, is there funding that they've identified for that? And what sort of timeline do they think that might happen in? So for some of the remove cars in the downtown, obviously, that's not going to be in the purview of the transportation committee to do. But for the things that are a little bit more reasonable, like, archaeological sensitive areas, have they thought through those things? And if they present something to us and say, here are the 10 surveys we want, here are different funding sources and a different timeline of when we want to do each of those things, and how we can actually implement that in eight years? Great, then I'm not in any place to want to say, okay, that isn't important, if it doesn't, if it's something that they can do and that is reasonable. Right, so, but without knowing that context, it would be really hard to edit this down.
So now it is just a wish list. It's really just, yeah.
Is it a wish list, or can we make it a work plan?
And, and I thought one of your points too, Mike, was to make sure that whatever we put in this is something that will get done.
It, it may not necessarily, everything gets done, because things, you just never know how things are gonna change over the eight years, but these were the things that, that they wanted to work on in the next eight years. I mean, something.
It just seems like there's a lot here, and the potential is to have a lot of things unfulfilled. So, you know, if you have a work plan, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess that'd be a question to ask them. You know, is this just a wish, or do you have some kind of plan?
So one thing I'm hearing is that, as we go through these chapters, to, maybe we can, we can make a habit of creating a feedback list and a question list to send back to the committees to get further information, something that we should, just do that for each one.
Yeah, or maybe, I think, giving them a clear framework, like, how much of a difference will this make? And then, how much resources will this take? Because there are some things that may not make much of a difference, but may not take any resources, and then there are others that will make huge difference and also not take many resources. And then there are probably plenty of things that will take lots of resources and may not make much of a difference. And I think those are the ones that we should be, you know, finding and, and probably coming from this.
I can impact the evaluation assessment, like, what's the, what's your impact for the actual, what's the actual feasibility of the resources?
So like, on a scale of one to 10, for all of these items, put a score, and then.
You're just gonna get a bunch of tens. We didn't put it in the list, it wasn't a ten.
But it could, it could, even if it was just to go through and give a priority, what are the things that are the most? Because I know from their standpoint, the things that they want to look at, if I were to go and guess what they want to do most in their understanding, is to go through and continue to do more, to do new historic districts. So our current historic district is, is done. It's, that's as big as they're gonna let us get. But there are a number of smaller historic districts that could also be made, including like, the Meadow. The Meadow is not a historic district, but it easily could be. They're all of a similar age, they're all built of a similar style. There's value of protecting that. Up in the college, in College Street, that's currently not in the historic district, but really, the college, that entire area, could be its own historic district. I think those are the areas that the HPC really wants to prioritize. And then, maybe the, the scenic pieces that we had talked about here at the last meeting, talking about the dome, do we want to have some viewshed protection for the dome in certain areas? Do we want to have some viewshed protection for the dome in certain areas? Well, we don't, you know, we have that survey from 2002, and so maybe that survey's done. Maybe we just go and say, that survey is still valid, that's the one that we should work on, and we should just put that into the, put that into the regulation. So I think those were the areas that, from an understanding standpoint, and from a protection standpoint, those were two areas they really wanted to work on. And then the other big piece for them was to, to work on those outreach pieces. They really wanted to get more, you know, on the website and have, have the historic preservation, whether it's historic preservation, or I think there's also a private organization, Montpelier Heritage Group?
Yeah, and they active now?
They, they aren't, but those were those, they, they're like, we should have, we should have that group back doing more again, because we need to be interacting with the public and getting the public to understand and value our historic resources again. And I think there are pieces, you know, as Joan pointed out, there are pieces that we have gaps that need to be fixed. You know, we had a, had, it's better under the new process and rules that we have, but I think the new design review, review rules will also help to fix those inconsistencies that we had. You know, we have, our goal for preservation is to use a lot of regulations, but those regulations were not fairly and evenly enforced, and that created a lot of unhappiness with a number of people, some of whom felt we should be enforcing to the strict guidelines, and others that felt that it was, you know, the exceptions were not being handed out on a consistent basis. So we really just needed to have rules that were more consistent and fair, and I think that would be helping a number of people. I think some people would not be happy being in, but at least a fair process would give them a better understanding.
And aside from knowing the level of impact and resources needed, I think one thing that would be helpful, at least for me, is to recognize, as it sort of gets a responsibility, but also asking the question, are there other levels of government that do this or are responsible for it? Either the federal government, or regional government, or state government, in helping us prioritize? Because we can be guilty sometimes of reinventing real Montpelier, where we're like, we're going to create an orifice of this, when there's maybe some state regulations that do exactly something very similar.
Yeah.
And I'm not seeing anything specific here, I'm just...
And, and you will get some of those, and those were some of the questions that have come up when I've worked with some other groups as well, where people are like, oh, we should have a program that does this. And I'm like, well, you know, I think I made that comment with the energy plan, where we should be doing something to have funding to assist homeowners in this. And I'm like, well, Efficiency Vermont does that. I think our goal should be to connect people to them, to, to educate people on the resources that are available, rather than creating new ones. Now, if there are, when we get to energy, that, if there are gaps that are in there...
There are definitely gaps, yeah.
But I think that was some of the points that we're trying to do, is we're, we don't want to be reinventing it, and same with housing. You know, we will, we will, you know, I'm responsible for trying to get 240 new housing units, but I will not pound one nail, I will not build one house. You know, we're here to do things that help our partners, that will provide those services or provide that housing. But we aren't going to provide any housing.
So find ways to encourage other groups that are already doing the work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, and this one, the only one I think, I can think of is, is when we were starting to talk about coordinating these outreach programs and trying to coordinate them with our partners. I think there was maybe a, a goal that got to that effect, or a strategy that got to that effect.
Expand partnerships with educational institutions, at least, there's that one.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing too, I mean, I know from teaching architectural history, that a lot of the resources I got were from the state, and from the State Division of Historic Preservation. So, you know, that if they could identify, that they would be working with the state as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the first strategy that was, I think why it came out as their first strategy under Goal B, was to establish a program to coordinate, collaborate, and sponsor educational events with current and potential partners. Montpelier Alive, Division of Historic Preservation, Montpelier Heritage Group, Preservation Trust of Vermont, Vermont Folklife Center, Vermont Humanities Council, the Kellogg Hubbard Library, UVM Preservation Program, local historical societies, and other similar organizations around the topic of historic and cultural resources. So I think their idea was that we would have a, you know, a program, a person who would assist in doing some of those. In this case, I think a lot of that would be some of the HPC members themselves, they're very well-connected in these groups anyways, but, but to have a formal program that would let them be able to say, this is, this is what we're going to do. We're not, we're not doing it as much as we are coordinating, collaborating, and sponsoring.
Is, is this, is this really a report from the committee, or really our implementation strategy for historic cultural resources? And I guess the reason I'm asking is, stepping back, they have a very specific, maybe, purview expertise, and have been focusing on elements of our mostly historic resources, but are we missing our definition of what a cultural resource is? Is, is it all captured?
That's a good point.
I was going to ask, I don't know what a cultural resource is here, and I would like to know that.
I think, I think like, art is another thing that, unless there's somewhere else in the city plan that's appropriate, that something should be addressed.
Public art?
All forms, performance.
Is it another section on cultural, or is it, is this it?
Um, this is, this is where it is. I mean, obviously, a number of things can fall into, there's community services, there's other places, but this is, I think, I think the state planning goal is historic, cultural, and scenic, lumped together?
Oh.
Do you remember? I, I think that's, yeah, I think it's historic, cultural, and scenic. We're all tied together in, if you look at the state land use goals for why zoning and planning, that statute is one of the 12, 13 goals. One of them is historic, scenic, and cultural resources, the preservation and protection of them.
It does seem like art is really what, and then, go see it.
Yeah, no, I think we have something to do with it.
Good, good point. That's a good catch. That's one that I should, because we do have a, an arts, public art commission now. And I'll see if, add art.
I mean, it seems like there are a number of other cultural resources that you could identify beyond that. I don't, I just don't know how they get captured, that's all.
Yeah, and, and there are various ways we could do it. I mean, we could obviously just leave this chapter as the historic resources and have a separate chapter for cultural resources. We can, if we, if we think they, they net and, and kind of come together well, we can just start to work them in. There probably won't be much, well, maybe there is understanding cultural resources.
What else is there outside of art? Let's think about...
Well, performance, I mean, there's, you know, basically, everything happens in the downtown area.
There's music.
Music, right, I mean...
Right, what do we think of Montpelier and cultural resources? What do we value?
Historically significant places, yeah.
I mean, somebody, I've, somebody might argue, the religious institutions could be a cultural resource, the various ones that we have.
Right, we could, we, you know, it could become, what, very broad?
Yeah, I mean, I think the HPC may look at the, at the churches and synagogues as the buildings, and not necessarily the...
Community.
Yeah, the cultural resource that...
I mean, would our farmer's market, does that make a cultural resource?
Yeah. So are those things that, I mean, would it make sense then to separate that into a different s- chapter?
Arts and culture?
Arts and culture, yeah.
Because we can have as many chapters as we like, there's no, we just have certain, certain chapters we have to have, but you can always have more chapters.
So can you tell us more about this public arts commission? Like, is this, is a, after what it's taken, we rely on...
It was recently created, um...
They just did a report, is this a good, that did a...
Public Arts Master Plan?
Yes.
Yep. So it was something that started before I got here. When the previous director was here, we got an NEA grant, or we had applied for an NEA grant, we got denied, we reapplied, and we got funded the first year I was here to do a public art master plan. And it took a couple of years to get through the process of developing that. And one of the recommendations was that we should put money aside and create a public art commission, and it was kind of meant to capture, I think, what was recognized by our outside consultant that came in, and they came in from another state, and they looked at, and it was remarkable how few public art, and how little public art we have for being the capital.
But we have a lot of attorneys.
We have a lot of attorneys. So we, we should have the statue of the attorney at the roundabout, have a roundabout with an attorney with the... And having, having previously worked in Berry City, which is, you know, full of, you know, a lot of art from the Burns Memorial to the various pieces that were throughout the city.
Zipper.
And then...
The giant zipper?
Yep, the giant zipper. They did a number of new ones after, right after I left. All of their bike racks were all...
Little gargoyles things?
Gargoyles, and so they did, they're doing a number of nice pieces over there. And I think that's what, when our consultant came in and took a look at Montpelier, they were like, you guys are the capital city. And you could go and take kids and go through and say, all right, everyone, go out and find us some public art somewhere, and just, and there really isn't any. And I think that's what they were trying to do, is, not necessarily that we need to have a giant statue in downtown somewhere, but, you know, there's a lot of things from a lot of other communities. And so that was the goal of the Public Arts Commission, is to help to go through and sponsor. The first piece of public art is supposed to be going in with the transit center, so there's a...
It, it's already there.
Is it already there? Okay. I haven't...
The exterior one, the...
So that was supposed to be the first one where we would commission a, a piece of art, and that we would start looking for other places, and as projects come forward, can we find other places where it can be incorporated into? It was part of the discussion of the parking garage, if that ever comes forward, that it's got, the, the skeins that are on the outside are changeable, and that as you look at them at certain angles, you'd be able to see certain images in, in the sides of the parking garage. And we could change them from year to year. That's part of the, the plan for that. But are there other places? And that's what the Public Arts Commission was supposed to look at, in making sure that we are not just the Lost Nation Theater, but that we are, you know, and certainly, we have a lot of art here, actually, but just not the public art. We have the performing arts, we have theater, we are...
Things worth putting in the plan to support those things, to continue to support them.
Yep.
To draw attention to them, yeah.
So, yeah, so the public art plus the existing...
So maybe, so the thought, the opinion, maybe we keep this as the historic resources and take, what, we had arts and culture?
Arts and culture.
Arts and culture?
Is, is another good reason to do that, because this would fit nicely with, like, the designer review regulations, and there's different regulations slash, I don't know what kind of regulations, over the culture and art piece, it's sort of a difference we don't necessarily want. Yeah.
It's not something that's regulatory.
Yeah, right, exactly. So maybe breaking it out wouldn't be a bad call.
Sounds...
Yeah. And I, I also want to mention the, the parades and, and events that are put on by the community that are art and performance art oriented. It exists, I mean, I think those things were worth mentioning, something that we want to continue.
It'd work, I'm excited about that.
Not just the city, though, but like the odd Species Day and stuff like that.
Right, right.
Species Day.
That's definitely part of our culture, right?
Yes. Something that makes us unique.
Yeah. I just need to, I don't have anything to do with this thought yet, but I just need to toss out that, I don't see, this may be more appropriate for the culture, if we're going to break that out, but I don't see a whole lot of, like, mention of striving to understand diverse histories in our space, and I don't know exactly what that would look like, or if they care about that, but I think it, maybe we could care about that, you know, and encourage them to name that somehow. I don't exactly know how we would go about, like, what the strategies would be, but diversity is important, and it might be great to name that.
Certainly under the archaeological sensitive areas.
Archaeological sensitive areas is one thing. Yep, for sure.
Mike, do you feel like you have notes, or should we go through a list of feedback to pass on, like we were talking about before?
I can, I can go back and work with, work with them to see, maybe ask them some, some questions. Yeah, I mean, as you said, the other option is, we go through and we make adjustments, and then kind of let them know and let them respond.
I figure, I figure we will do that, but wait to get the feedback that we talked about first. Is everyone comfortable with that? So, so for now, we'll come up with the questions we want to ask, based on what we have. Once we get that back, we'll, we'll plan to rewrite more or less.
Okay, we'll be a little more, like, we'll ask questions first.
We'll ask, we'll ask questions, and, once we're more informed, we'll, we'll make it our own. And we'll, and we should, and if you would, Mike, as we go through this, let, let the committees know that that's the approach that we're planning to take.
And then, I mean, at some point, right, we're, and then maybe after that step, then we post it online and solicit publicity, okay? That's where that comes in.
Yeah, yeah, we, we're going to have to have the, the public input phase. And I think in, in the past, what used to happen is the planning commission would write all the chapters, and then send them out to the commission. In this case, we just sent them to the commission, and we're just adding an extra step in there. But at some point, we've got to have an extensive amount of public input, because obviously, any of these is going to, are going to need the public support.
I also think that maybe next week, we could plan to spend time writing out what we talked about, about the culture and art piece, with the understanding that, yeah, some public art input will come from the Public Art Commission, but I don't think we're going to have any other committee that exists that's going to be able to do what we were just talking about, about culture and art. So maybe we can plan to write that ourselves next week.
Maybe we scan out, let the Public Art Commission do.
We'll, we'll ask them at the same time. Yeah, and I'm not going to assume, though, that we'll get anything from them.
It's a fairly new commission.
What about, like, Montpelier Alive?
Yeah, and getting their involvement too.
Yeah.
So should we go over, just brainstorm the questions we want to put back to this work?
I, I think it's worth doing. I mean, Mike has some notes, but I think it's worth...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we get one.
Exactly, yeah, I think that's great.
Before we get to questions, can I ask about a bullet on the back? In consultation with the Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission will participate in Act 250 and Section 248 processes where historic and archaeological resources may be impacted. Has that happened in the past?
No.
Is that...
No, it, it hasn't.
I mean, they can seek to intervene in those processes. I don't think there's anything we could even stop it, but...
We have the, we have the Planning Commission, Planning Commission and city council have statutory standing. So usually what happens is, if...
The Planning Commission does.
If the, yeah, the Planning Commission does. So usually, if, if it were, let's say, the Conservation Commission had a concern about a project, they can, they can sometimes actually get standing. Conservation Commissions can sometimes get standing too, but a lot of times, people will go to the Planning Commission's or their city councils and go and say, can you guys intervene on our behalf?
Okay, so this is not out of left field? This is something that had...
No, we get very few Act 250 permits, so it doesn't really come up.
Yep.
I could see potentially, if, if one were coming up, I could see a 248 potentially.
Solar panels on roofs?
Somebody's putting, yeah, somebody decides they're going to put solar panels or, or a telecommunication tower on the side of a church spire, and they're like, hey, 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 you can't, you know, you can do it that way, you can do it that way, but you can't do it the way it's being proposed, because it's going to have an impact on, on that piss... but you can't do it the way it's being proposed, because it's gonna have an impact on, on that historic resource.
Yep.
Again, I don't see very many of them, but.
In this case, it's saying we will participate. Do we want to say that we may participate?
Right, yeah.
By all means, it's your.
But this is a great time, we're gonna get called.
Yeah. You want to change will to may?
Well, this also says, yeah, will when the resources may be impacted, so that's quite broad.
Yeah.
Or may, may participate when they will be impacted?
It feels like this is them telling us that we need to be in consultation with them when these things come up.
Wouldn't it all go for the.
Is that the point of the bullet? Perhaps, yeah.
I feel like this is, this is, this is a landmine. No, I'm serious, this is a landmine, it shouldn't be codified in the city plan.
Right, I feel like we have regulations and we have our own review process.
Yeah, there's, there's no reason.
Get involved.
Don't these things have to?
From telecommunications stuff that we're exempt from reviewing.
These have to be in accordance with town plans anyways, right? Doesn't the PUC?
Yeah, there's.
Considers it anyways.
There's a whole subset that, well, that's another piece that I'm sure that we're gonna base on DPS on.
Yeah, I think it would be good to be clear in this plan on how it should be interpreted in any state regulatory proceedings. And I think that we should be clear that our bylaws are how we want to regulate development and not use a municipal plan for state regulatory purposes.
Oh, I see, like just cover.
So, so it's not even worth asking to give feedback on this one?
I mean, the only, the only piece I would say, yes, I'm not a giant fan of Act 250. The only exception I would have is, the 248, we're barred from being able to regulate in 248. And if a project came up that would have a negative impact on a historic resource, this would be our only avenue for participating.
Right, although we could probably include a clause referring to our bylaws as the interpretation of the plan saying, review our bylaws for.
That doesn't work?
Nope, it's gotta be in the town plan. That's how, that's how you get defense.
But in, by adopting the bylaws essentially as part of your, doesn't have a plan.
The, the PUC has been stubborn, but I, a caveat with this, since they did, I can't remember the number, four years ago, there, there was statutory change that Act 1. There is, there is now a path forward, the DPS will walk us through that, like what we have to put where in the town plan. So that.
Right, for 174, and we have.
Yeah, 174, yeah.
Approves.
Yeah, but it's still, I'm pretty sure, it still can't be in the bylaws, it has to be.
Yeah, that's, that's just.
We're also covered by the regional plan as well.
Does the Energy Committee take up energy siding?
Do we have preferred sites?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No, not yet.
They didn't identify this.
Well, we would have to adopt them into our, there's, there are maps that we could adopt.
But there's state preferred sites.
They did the identification maps, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, just checking around, we walked through all that, yeah.
Hey, you know, so it sounds like there is a process that exists where we may be involved with Act 250. Scenarios exist where that may happen. It being in this plan or not being this plan isn't really going to affect that. And so all this does is possibly muddle things.
That's a landmine.
Yeah. I'm with you, I'm with you.
No, we shouldn't put it there, somebody will step on it.
So eliminate it.
Yeah.
You don't want to adjust it to just go and give us the option to participate, or it's, I mean.
I don't think regardless of whether or not we have it in the town plan, we have options to do it. I don't think that we ought to affirmatively.
No, certainly the will, certainly the will participate is, has to go. So your thought is just to remove that altogether?
But you were just saying.
I just think we should, I mean, I can't speak to the Act 250 piece, but the 248 piece, like, yeah, it's Act 174. We just, we follow those, yeah, we follow that path and we get to where we need to be so that we're covered if and when something comes down the pipeline.
That next strategy, I mean, that's also, I guess I would also, I mean, a Section 106 review is for federally, for federally funded, you know, a historic preservation review for federal funding. I don't, is that even possible?
I had, I had some questions on that when I read that one. First of all, they, they set it up the policy, I couldn't see how this would be a policy. Any Section 106 responses involving historic resources be provided? And I had a question to the HPC, or, I, I don't see, I mean, I don't see where, I don't see, a Section 106 report is a Section 106 report. I don't know if it needs comment from the HPC.
Is that the kind of report they would have done for the French block?
Yeah, that, it was right.
Yeah, anytime.
But I don't, I don't understand, it's like they don't trust the State Historic Preservation Office?
Right.
To protect their interests? It seems a little, and I'm not even sure what, you know, legally how they are.
What's a Section 106 response?
Well, you have to get a, I don't know if I'm saying this right, but you have to get a Section 106, like if you're getting, doing a housing project that has federal funding, you have to get a review from a historic preservation consultant. And then the State Historic Preservation Office reviews that letter as well. Decide whether historic preservation resources are protected.
It's become somewhat of a standard process, so we have used Section 106 reports in non-federal projects before when somebody comes up like they want to demolish a historic structure, and it's going through the local zoning. We might request a Section 106 report to be presented to the DRB, just because it gives an understanding of what the resources are that, that are there that could be lost. I mean, it doesn't say what you can, it just says this is what's here.
So you hire a historic preservation consultant to do that?
That, we would have the, if, if somebody were to demolish, there's, there are a couple of places where you can have, there's the option to have a Section 106 report. They're usually not that expensive, and we can ask the applicant to present that as conditionally technical.
I think the concern here might actually be that, that the state might be advocating to preserve something, and they might envision a scenario where City Council, you know, on behalf of a constituent goes and says, city doesn't care about this, you know, let them tear it down or do whatever you like. And what they're saying is, the city needs to, whoever's submitting this needs to consult with the HPC so they understand.
Oh, like who's ever doing the Section 106 review?
Right, this is.
Was consulting, okay, well, that's clear to me, because that's.
I'm not sure.
If, if that's the intention, yeah.
Because the state does a pretty good job in responding, so like why would we? I'm trying to think, why would they, what's the concern there? And it might be that the city gets involved with it.
Yeah, and then the question I would come up with again comes back to the start of, you know, a policy. I mean, there's no way we'd be able to enforce that, even if we said ordinance. I mean, the only way we could, we were able to loop it in before was, it was part of the demolition and a zoning permit. We could say it's an application requirement. You have to provide us with a report so we can understand.
Again, this just seems like a preference for best practice.
It seems like the HPC wants to be involved when there's an approval process involving the city. If we can write maybe a, or ask them for a vague or, or a, you know, more broadly phrased strategy to, to get them involved without specifically trying to, can't do it these ways. Okay, do we, so who has questions for Mike to send back? Stephanie, your questions are good.
Yeah, we wrote them all in, so, things that are, they continue versus new tasks. Things that are in their work plan or in someone else's purview. Responsible entities for each, so that's the same thing, it's them or somebody else. Identification of funding where necessary.
I prioritize cost and feasibility, who.
I don't know how to run the question, but like, ask like how the specific strategies that are being proposed further, like the other goals.
How do they support the goals?
Yeah, basically. I guess the notion is like, how does an archaeologically, how does a survey of archaeologically sensitive areas? Like what, what goals is that further? Or is it just, are we just doing a survey to do the survey, and you don't have a clear understanding of what that information, what that debt is?
I'd like to know more about that one too.
Well, I think that was, it was to further the understanding of the historic resources, but the question is.
Do those exist at all?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I believe they do, there, there are, there are archaeologically sensitive areas we do have to go through when we get these projects, I know that's part of. In some cases, archeology is anything that's, that's below ground. So it doesn't necessarily mean Native American. It could be archaeological in the sense of, there are foundations from this 18th century.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that, that the survey of archaeologically sensitive areas is problematic for me. It's just, that's an example, like, if they can articulate with the strategy, like, what is this further?
Yeah, that was, in their case, I think they would answer that, that was their strategy to improve our understanding of our historic resources. We don't know where they are. We don't have any way of determining whether there's a lot of them or not a lot of them. Is there, are they all concentrated in one area? Are we, do we have significant ones that we just don't know about, and that we should be doing more to protect them before somebody built a parking lot over the first cemetery in Montpelier? We should have an idea of where these things might be.
We don't have that already. I'm surprised that there's not some kind of.
Well, we certainly don't have a map anywhere that we've, that we have, when a project comes in, for us to go through and evaluate that goes and says, oh, you're in, you're in an archaeologically sensitive area. And when, I, I worked, I've worked in a number of places in Vermont, and I worked for the Northwest RPC. And obviously, we've got Highgate and Swanton and those areas, which have large Indian burial grounds and structures. And having a map of the archaeologically sensitive areas was important to being able to implement their protection strategies. How important that is for us out here, there was a Rivers map, a Rivers book, there's actually, it's a big book that was done in the 80s. And the archaeologically sensitive band does come through Montpelier. What was the basis of that? I don't know, but it certainly was there. We were certainly identified at that time as having the potential for Native American archaeological resources, but I have no idea how significant that potential was. But I think that's what the study would determine, is if there's stuff there that we should be conscious of as we develop.
Maybe it's just a matter of adding a little to each bullet, or, you know, conduct a survey in order to have a baseline.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm not trying to make it onerous, but I think just having them have that, like doing that mental exercise is really what are we trying to achieve by doing this? Might be helpful in them sort of prioritizing.
Is there?
Because I just don't know, I don't really care for doing it for the sake of doing it, or if there's.
Is there a definition of culturally sensitive areas?
That's one I have the question mark for, I would have to hear from them as to what.
It'd be nice to hear what they, what they think, just so we make sure we're capturing it.
I mean, we may be, in this case, as we talked about, maybe putting art and culture into a different chapter, so that may go away. But we'll see what they had in mind when they were talking about culturally sensitive areas.
Yeah, because if we do lift it into a new chapter, we want to make sure we take what they meant with us.
Yep.
Mike, I have a really quick question, and I don't want to take anything off topic, but on page three, they talk about establishing a program to identify endangered historic buildings. Is endangered historic building a term of art that I'm not aware of?
No, it's, this is, this comes from the result of the two rivers out at Agway. There's that, the homestead that is falling into disrepair. And the city did a public nuisance on it, and so it's, we declared that it should be torn down. And now they're trying to pull together a bunch of folks so they could go through and kind of rescue that structure. And that kind of came up to go through, from their perspective on the HPC, that maybe we should be more proactive instead of reactive to these. We shouldn't wait till the city declares that it's time to tear this building down before the HPC thought they should be maybe getting involved to see where they could identify historic resources that are falling into disrepair and to kind of address them at an earlier stage. I think the bigger question on that one, I think it's a, it's an admirable idea. I think it'll come down to the amount of resources.
And I assume these would be endangered historic buildings that are not on these other surveys? I mean, it.
They might be on these other surveys. We may have ones that are, I can't think of any off the top of my head. Maybe there's one that's downtown in the historic district that's falling into disrepair, that, for whatever reason.
Yeah, it just seems to me like it's a little bit overlapping with the survey. Like if we have a survey of our important resources, then when something happens to one of them, they could.
Yeah, I think the program in this case is, the program is to get involved. I think the, the first one is to understand, and you could go through and understand where these endangered buildings are. But I think this one here was more of a, of a proactive, we should have, we should have a program to do something about it as well.
To identify it beforehand, and then I, then do something about it.
And do something about it.
Like the houses on Court Street.
Like the houses that got torn down on Court Street, yeah.
Yeah.
For folks that weren't here before, there was, I believe it was, the insurance companies?
Oh, because they were expanding their parking lot.
Yeah, and so they wanted to take out some historic buildings. And so basically, it ended up being demolition by neglect, by letting them kind of fall into disrepair to the point that they couldn't be rehabbed.
When was that?
That was a long time ago. It was before me, but it was one of these ones that Eric Gilbertson and folks will tell you, can tell you the story of.
Now they have a parking lot and lower taxes.
Now they have the parking lot.
But it was crappy probably while we all had to watch those buildings look horrible for years and years. So I get why they'd want to not have that happen, just from a like.
Right, it's like they, you know, if they wanted to expand their parking lot, they bought the building, and then they just let it sit there.
Right.
Then maybe nobody's paying attention. So I guess, you know, HPC wants to.
I mean, there's the fine line, I guess, I don't want it to be redundant or like heavy-handed, but also it's pretty obnoxious when buildings just sit there. To get around the, you know, the regulation, and there's nothing to do about it.
I guess I just don't under, I don't really understand it, because it doesn't seem like you're endangered until you're endangered. Like how do you foresee the danger? Like, like the, that property you were talking about.
Unoccupied for a certain length of time and repairs not being made.
Okay, yeah, I guess to me, it's be clear to say that in any way, but I'm splitting, you know, getting to into the.
Definitely, there's gotta be some definitions section in this whole plan, right? We gotta define stuff.
Yeah, and there, I mean, there was a certain amount of how much we put into it. Like I said, eventually, it would be nice to have these things being able to link to other things where you can expound on them. At this point, we just, you know, need to know that we're gonna identify this, or we're gonna study this, or we're gonna do it. But, you know, then you could link and have more details of what that means. But we weren't gonna go through and expand on these until we kind of knew that's what we were all comfortable with. And, you know, to put a lot of time into something that gets removed later on didn't seem to make a lot of sense. But at the same time, if there are things that we should, in, in certain cases, and whether it's this one or whether it's housing, some of them are more detailed than others. And maybe some of these ones do need to have a little bit more added to them. Just to provide a little more, you know, just compiling oral histories of, of Montpelier residents.
Yeah.
You know, maybe it needs to have more than just that.
And this one, I feel like we also need some more.
And this one, I feel like we also need some more, some clearer benchmarks or metrics. Like if we're putting stuff, if we're adding places to this or a register, how many would we have to add for us to be considered, you know, successful in checking that?
Is that?
Yeah, let's, let's ask about that.
Cause there really aren't any benchmarks in this one, so how do they know when they increase the appreciation? Is there a measure?
Right, and if it's like, develop new educational programs such as blah, 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 what can we say, like, develop at least one, you can, you know, think of it in terms of, do we check that box?
Maybe it would be a percentage increase in, cause what they came to their strategy to increase the number of houses in.
Sometimes it becomes really difficult to, to put a benchmark to it. I mean, like I said, community appreciation, how do you really judge that, I think? But I do think we can, we can put more benchmarks onto some of the strategies. I think developing at least one or those types of things are, make a good.
I mean, they could survey the, the city and then determine.
But a certain point is, I'm not going to go through and survey the city.
Not you, no. This is all for them to do. This is HPC's work. So, I mean, there's a lot, a lot here that they say they're going to be doing, so.
Yeah, and I feel like, right, asking them to at least start thinking about quantifying, then they might call some, perhaps.
Yes, that's true. Mike, if you think that actually adding new design review districts is really important to them, I think it's only in this one little bullet. If appropriate, amend the boundary of the designer view district to include more or less of the city, depending on the purpose of the district and the goal of the city, that's like super.
It is. I think there's, I think there's a mix out there. I think there's a mix of opinions on the planning commission on, on how much design review. We just had the conversation of some of it, and I think they're caught in the same thing as, I think they would like to see more design review, more than just the area that it is right now.
It would be ironic for us to pass a city plan where we wish that there would, we would add more, in which we just had the opportunity to do so and decided not to.
It's like a condition of different districts sort of thing, something that we didn't talk about, if that's what they're asking, if that's what they're interested in.
I think, as I said, I think it goes back to the initial, the, the Meadow. They're, you know, just the first, you know, they, they want to go through and have a historic district that includes the Meadow. They make the Meadow. Then they would, then their follow-up would be, now that we have the historic district out there, we should have some design review standards out there as well. I think what is their opinion and their goals, that's, that's, I think, where you're going to have the harder, the more challenge to go through and say, yeah, that's their goal. I don't know. Are we gonna also support that and put that in our plan, that that's going to be our plan? Or are we going to go through and say, we're all for more studies to understand and do, and to catalog those historic resources out there? But I don't know if we're ready to take the next step to then require the design review standards out there as well, considering we don't in a number of areas currently. You know, Loomis and Liberty Street are currently in our historic district and not in our design review. Are we going to survey the Meadow and then put them in and still leave Loomis out?
It seems like something higher level, like considering all of these new informations and how things evolve and amending our bylaws so that they make sense. Can catch a lot of these things as opposed to hypotheticals and vague ideas around, consider that or something very specific, you know?
Yeah, we are trying to be more specific in here, and I think that is our hope is not to support and encourage, but to get in and, but consider would probably be an okay.
Or, I guess, amend our bylaws, you know, in the interest of the city based on everything, new information and et cetera, but we're going to be doing that anyway.
I think I'm just feeling like, the last few meetings, I feel like we've, I want from them just more, just tell me what it is you want. Don't say it in a way that doesn't make sense and then we have to ask all these back and forth questions. I just want to know. Like, if that's what you want, I want to know. This doesn't tell me that that's what they want, is new designer view districts. Whether or not we decide to keep that in is one thing. I just want to know what they want. And perhaps that's like the benchmark, like if they can get support for two new design districts and two separate parts or historic districts, then you have achieved a city that appreciates them. That'll use that.
I mean, I think the Historic Preservation Commission can have goals that aren't in the city plan, right?
Sure, yeah, I think so.
I mean, cause this to me seems like, right, they're gonna plan for the next design review, you know, to have their.
Yeah, like that would be beneficial for them to say it out loud, like if that's what they really want, then claim it.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah.
And, I mean, ultimately, this is the, the city's historic resources plan. It's not Historic Preservation Commission's plan. So they're developing the plan that we're gonna massage and adjust, and it may not be a hundred percent of what they want.
We should be comfortable doing what Mike just said, and that's taking the aspirations from a committee and translating them into some of the works for the city. And I think John had a good example earlier, talking about the possibility of expanding the design review boundary. That might be what they want specifically, but for us, it would be about talking about a process to look at the design review boundary and just, and going along the process lines, right? At the macro level as opposed to making, putting the cart before the horse kind of thing. But we can also decide to leave it out entirely.
Maybe this is too heavy-handed, but does it make sense when Mike types up his notes for us to review them before they go to the Historic Preservation Commission? Just to make sure that we feel like we all got.
Got everything in there that we wanted to say.
How do we do that with, how do we do that without running afoul of open meetings?
Oh, okay, right, forgot about that.
What if, Mike, if you do this in Google Docs and we just all add comments and that's just corporate and visible for anybody? That way, you know, we're reviewing it and they can see where there is, even if someone's comment gets answered and we're like, oh, ignore that. I don't think there's any, we have anything like to, to hide or we could do it all.
Are we allowed to give feedback directly to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we could do the Google Docs idea, as long as we were just putting our own ideas in it and not getting into conversations about it. I mean, it can be an open document that we all work on, but it's, if, you know, Stephanie is asking John questions, even that's not, well.
If there's questions, it's all, it's a public, open document. You can't argue it for we, for it to be more.
We could do that, and we could also, we could assign it to someone to review Mike's questions, and that could be a document that we have at the meeting later and it becomes public that way.
I mean, I could put it in there, yeah, I could put it in as a Word document into the Google Docs, then we could just either do comments or you can do strikeouts.
Just decide it to Aaron.
Decline.
Okay, let's just, let's just plan to do the Google Docs. I also, I had another, I had another idea along those lines, too, but. So we'll plan to do the Google Docs, and let's for the record right now, remind the public how to find this document.
Can the public find our Google Docs?
We could put a link on our page.
On the Doc page, like next to the minutes and stuff?
On the page for the Planning Commission or for the Planning Office?
Planning page.
Should be Planning Commission.
Okay.
All right, I will talk, maybe after Thanksgiving. Gotta see who's available. I'm only here tomorrow. I'm out here Wednesday, so.
So let's.
So we can put, we can react or we could make changes individually, as long as we're not in communication with anyone else's changes.
No, I think we can communicate as long as it's in that. We can't like send someone a note or call them.
A year from now, you can do whatever you want with this document, because it's. It's just gonna be like. And they were just, they had it all figured out.
There's no idea, just takes the whole.
Um, is this a good, so you designed a nifty website for us that we haven't been using. Is there a way that we can start using though to review these documents or have links through that?
Yeah, absolutely, if, if you guys want to.
Yeah, I mean, certainly we can.
I'm hesitant to put much more time into something that no one looks at.
I know, you've done a lot of work on that, so it'd be, it'd be nice if we could.
It's really great, we should use it that way. And I have another use for it, too, and that's to say that, let's, can we also have a document that we, between now and the next meeting, where we put down our thoughts on developing out the art and culture chapter? And then, and we'll also be using it in the future, because there's other, there's the land use chapter and other things that as a planning commission we'll be developing ourselves.
And as a result of these chapters, we can figure out what else is missing. There might be other things that pop up in between.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, hopefully we'll be able to make a lot of use of it. But so let's, let's do that. The, the, so what I'm asking the group for the art and culture chapter is, Mike's going to ask Montpelier Alive and the Public Art Commission for, for feedback about aspirations, goals and strategies, but.
I mean, if you want me to take a first.
Something there ourselves for us, for us to talk about in the future as well, though. So, so if everyone can give some thought to that and put something in that document for the next meeting.
I'm sorry to say that I got lost there. Sorry.
Think, think about the aspirations, goals and strategies for an art and culture chapter.
I thought Mike was gonna reach out to this.
He is, and at the same time, we are going to put our thoughts down in there, too, and then.
Create a separate Google.
Because those are just pieces anyway of the entire chapter, so I don't think there's a reason for that to hold us back from going, going ahead and start brainstorming it ourselves.
So that will be a separate Google document?
That'll be separate, yeah. And there'll be, and there'll be others in the future, like you were just talking about.
Yeah, and I can put, I mean, we've got the housing here. I could put the housing in there as well if somebody wants to start picking through that. People are kind of running out of time for today, but it's still, you guys have that, and as I get some of these other ones, I can link those on as well. Yeah, they have, they have a lot more benchmarks in there.
There's one in this one, in the back page. Explorer amending the design, oh, but it's only an explorer.
There's one I have a lot of, of concern about, that increasing the vacancy rate to five percent while having, while only adding a hundred and fifty units.
Yeah.
Which would mean we would lose a lot of people in Montpelier.
So we're just gonna tell those people to move out so we have enough vacancy?
Five percent is a healthy vacancy rate. Let's remember why we want a vacancy rate.
We need more housing.
Yes, it's, it's increasing the vacancies by.
Picking people out.
Increasing more housing.
Right.
But those two numbers don't quite go together.
Right, if you do, if you add the number that they added and we had a five percent vacancy rate, we would have to throw a lot of people out of Montpelier.
Yeah, I think we need, I think, I think five percent vacancy in the rental market is about seventy-five housing units. Assuming they are used for something else, which becomes our issue, short-term rentals.
Yeah, so then it becomes a short-term rental.
Can you guys help me out here? I don't, I know nothing about housing policy. When, the benchmark in Goal B on the second page is to increase the month supply for, for sale housing and maintain around a six-month supply. What is it, a six-month supply of housing?
So it's, it's kind of a, so a six-month supply of housing is the number of houses that are on the housing market at any point in time should be equivalent to the number of houses that will sell in a six-month period of time. So when you have less than six months of housing on the market, what you see is prices go up. So we currently have right now about a three-month, two to three months' supply of housing. During the housing crash in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, although not here, if you were to look statewide in Vermont, we got up to about fifteen months' supply of housing. So there are a lot of houses on the market, but, you know, it's gonna take fifteen months to sell that amount of houses, which is why prices would drop.
Based on some assumptions of.
Based on, yeah, based on, this, this is a federal housing, you know, this is Realtor Association looks at this and this is what they're, over a hundred years of tracking housing, that's what they find is when you, that's the metric.
Just to confirm, because I'm slow. Six-month housing supply in Montpelier, let's assume ten month, ten homes sell it per month. Six-month supply is sixty homes on the market.
You'd want sixty homes on the market, yeah.
Well, we don't have time to get into the housing plan, so.
Can I have one more question on this? What they run the historical?
Yeah.
Um, on Goal B, Strategy One, establish, this was the like collaborating with other groups. I don't know if this is worth asking them. You can tell me if not, but I kind of want to move that bit about collaborating with other groups into the goal. Like increase by doing all of this stuff in collaboration. Like, it's weird to me that we would only promote the changes to design review and then put up some walking tours in collaboration. Why couldn't we do this, everything else in collaboration with other groups? So I don't know if they're planning on, if they'd rather do those things by themselves, or if this was all meant to be in collaboration with partners. But it seems like.
I started to read this as like the goals are more aspirational than goals.
Yeah, but it could be aspirational to do the work in collaboration with.
No, what I'm saying is, I think that, I think you're right. I feel like the, the coordination could be a goal under a larger aspiration of increasing appreciation.
Yeah.
Certainly can be, I mean, there are ways I could look at, you know, because not all of them require the coordination, certainly there could be the goal, increase the community's appreciation for its historic resources.
Or maybe it's just, I want, I want more things in this bullet.
Where appropriate, where appropriate in, in coordination with others, you know?
I just like that idea. I think it's a good one, and a lot of these things could be done in coordination. I guess not the last few, but.
Do we have any other things to pass along through, Mike?
You thank them for the work, given that there's a lot of good, I think this was good work and it is, you know, well structured. And I feel like our job maybe is to be like critical or try to improve it in this, and I don't want the message to be like, we're, we have a whole, we, you know, didn't like this at all. I think there's a lot of good work going into it. It was very thoughtful and just that we'll be giving them feedback, not because we didn't think it was good.
Thank you for saying that.
No, it's, for, for historic preservation purposes, yeah, it's very thorough.
And because we're kind of coming in not having all of their background, in order for us to be able to understand that those are the kinds of questions that we need to ask. So it's instructive to them to know that and, and maybe to simplify things.
Yeah, we know it's gonna be iterative, too. So do we want to keep the way this is structured right now and knowing that in the future we'll probably rearrange our goals and strategies? Or did you want me to take a shot at having the aspiration, the three goals, and then all the strategies?
I think it helps to have the strategies under each goal, because they are.
At least for now and then later on rearrange them.
For a prototype, if you, and if you feel like you have the time, which I'm not gonna assume at all, I mean, you could put it together and we can look at them side by side to see what we think is.
Or you can, if you want to just leave it like this, and I can just make it so that you, you can have views, you can view it either way. You can just toggle it and then it'll show you it under each goal and then under each strategy.
Cause it's gonna be linked anyway, right? The strategies will be linked individually to the goals.
Right.
It's a little less overwhelming than having all those strategies listed together, I think. It's a little less overwhelming than having all those strategies listed together, I think.
There'll be a paper form of this though, right? It will not have that ability.
You're right, the paper form will not have the ability to be.
To be toggling.
You just have two papers in the paper.
Because, like Regional Planning Commission and others are going to be, I don't know, using it as in a paper form. I'm just saying that.
I thought it was.
I think there's some debate, there's some debate as to whether or not you can go all digital. I know John, John and I would like to go and not worry about having a paper version, but I, my, my sense is we're gonna have to have some single printed copy that would come out and be the paper plan. Although my hope is that it would be accessed and used a lot more just through its web or its digital presence.
And if that's the intent, then I think we should design it like that.
I think so too.
And then at the end, we can say, okay, how do we make this in a printed format so the RBC can review it? But when we develop it, if that's what we want it to be, which is, I'm totally on board, also, we should design it like that.
So, yeah, they'll end up being one version. And, and, I mean, in, in a lot of ways, this is a very dry format. My hope is that, you know, when we, as we get these more complete, that, um, next fall, the municipal planning area would be to get some, to hire somebody to go and do the, the design, you know, really start to lay it out and make it look nice and add the pictures and do all the other pieces that, that we would wanna do. I'm just, I have none of those skills.
All right, so, uh, parting, uh, note, uh, for next week. We're planning to discuss an art and culture chapter and look at what we all individually come up with and put on the Google Doc and put on the website for the, which is publicly accessible.
December ninth.
Not really next week. Two weeks.
Two weeks, next meeting. And, uh, we'll do that as well as plan to dive into the housing chapter and do something similar as we did tonight where we look to for things that we'll want feedback on and, and just kind of do a first step process on that.
But Mike's gonna put it on now, so we could comment on the housing, on the doc.
And it's, it's a much more comp, yes. It's a much more complicated because it's got four aspirations, not one, so it does get a little bit more. But housing is like this.
And it ties into many other areas as well, so.
It's very concrete.
Very concrete, yes.
Can you send a link to this?
Oh, I will, uh, we'll send a link to, to this. As I said, well, most, some people have an issue with it. It is really big. Sixty megabytes, so, um, I will try to send a link. Um, I know they, so this meeting, I mean, I guess now that we're on, um, so the streetscape meeting that the SE Group has been working on, the Downtown Master Plan, there is going to be a public meeting for input. Tentatively, it's been scheduled for December twelfth. I believe that is a Thursday. It is the day after a council meeting, so, um, they're scheduling that. That should be coming out. There are some preliminary sketches and concepts for people to take a look at, start thinking about, and it's a really big file and we're trying to getting it, trying to get it smaller, but I will try to get a link up for that. I can send the link at least to the commissioners here. And as I said, don't try to download that on your phone. Might take.
That would be a problem.
It might cost you some money. Um, so that's on the twelfth. Um, I also wanted to mention to everybody, I, I, we told them either six or six-thirty. They haven't finalized it yet.
Okay, so.
But they did settle on the, the date, not the time. It happened once last week. I canceled a meeting and everyone gets a notice or some of you get a notice.
That was confusing.
It is confusing.
I'm gonna be doing that one more time, tonight or tomorrow. Um, what happened was I, I set up a calendar invite and I, at, years ago, and I said, you know, make it continuous into the future. We're gonna meet on the second Tuesday. Just keep it in the future. But when I canceled that, two and a half years later, it sends the email back to everybody who was on that two and a half years ago. So Kim Chaney was getting after me about, why am I still getting these? I'm like, so I'm just deleting the last one. So that way they're all eliminated. So you're gonna get one.
I like didn't show up to a meeting once because I thought it was getting.
And it's just weird, it's really weird how.
And somehow it got to be originator for that, those organizer as well.
It looks like.
Because Kim said he was getting emails, notices from me.
Oh, from you?
And it's like, no, it's not me.
So I'm gonna, I, I'm just going to, because what I've been doing is just sending out invite every meeting
Yeah.
to, to link things to, and I do one meeting at a time, but my calendar has an automatic filling, but I hadn't realized that that auto into the future was actually tied to everybody's emails. So I'm gonna cancel that last one, but I, I was gonna do it this afternoon and I was like, I better not do it because if I do it, nobody's gonna show up tonight, so.
Which one are you canceling?
Uh, so I've canceled, because I, I canceled already the, this is the fourth, so I already canceled the second, all the meetings of the second Tuesday of the month. I canceled that one a few weeks ago and messed everybody up. I still have a reoccurring one on the fourth Tuesday of the month. So now I have to delete this one, fourth Monday, sorry, fourth Monday of the month. So now I have to delete this one, so that way it'll all go away and I'm gonna hear from.
So ignore all meeting cancellations from Barb.
Everyone's meeting cancellations from Barb.
So the next one is going to be.
Is gonna happen, but you're gonna get a cancellation notice.
The twenty-third is also happening?
The twenty-third's not going to happen, but we, but we probably, we might wanna, we might wanna talk next time about rescheduling it.
Okay, all right.
No, I unfortunately can't make it next time. Sorry. Then I will review and look at things online on my comments.
Great, great. Yeah, and if, and if, if anyone else can't make it next time, let us know. Um, this, this tends to be a working meeting though, so, you know, quorum's not mandatory, but obviously it's better if people can make it. Okay, uh, so we're running over. John has moved to adjourn. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. We are adjourned.